I'm gonna go without him.
Take care of it.
Okay, ready? I'd like to call to order this annual organizational meeting of the Chippewa Valley Board of Education. We will waive the pledge for this meeting. And the first item is a consent agenda that includes like appointments for council and financial institutions and whatnot. So can I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Pearl, supported by Ms. Pyden. Questions or comments?
I have a question.
Okay.
How often, I think, how often do we look into other applications or other options? Or do we just?
We have bid out, like our, we have had proposals done in the last two years for our, what do you call it?
Auditors.
Auditors. We have done legal, but it's been a while. So every, like, you know, and that's, we don't have a regular schedule, but we do occasionally if we have enough, you know, reason that we think it makes sense, then we do. But we just did the auditors two years ago.
Okay, have we checked in, I guess, other prices and that? It just, you know, that's normally so.
Typically, we try to find the best people we can find for best hourly. I mean, that's kind of what we try to, I mean, attempt to do. We always try, but not in a formal bid process, no.
Yeah.
Not, we did, we did do legal not that long ago either, if I remember correctly. That was maybe within the last eight years.
Okay.
So, yeah, we do it, we do it occasionally. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, our investment, oh, this is all part of the, no, item three, okay. Item three is investments. This basically gives, wait a minute, where's, where do I, how come there's no? Oh, item three is investment, so that is the. Yeah, is that in here? I didn't see it.
Under dis emitting signatories.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yeah, so that is on page three or four. So may I have a motion for investments, please?
So moved.
Support. Okay, questions or comments, please? Okay, anyone, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, meetings, memberships, and conferences. This is the, basically, we do, they're, you know, any memberships that we belong to, which is M A S B is really the only one that we pay dues to. But other explains other when our meetings are, it's an attached agenda. Do I have a motion for that, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Vitoric.
Support.
Supported by Mr., Ms. Pyden. Questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Did we include the meeting, okay, the, okay.
Yeah, that is on there.
The meetings were on the membership and conferences, okay.
I have a motion, do I have a support for adjournment?
Support.
Moved by Mr., Ms. Pyden, supported by Mr. Pearl, to adjourn the meeting at 9:05 PM. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we are gonna, our meeting is posted for 9:15, so we will wait 10 minutes to make sure that the posting is accurate and we start the meeting on 3:00. You say your time is over?
Mm-hmm.
In today's July 13th, please rise for the pledge.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item is B, we have no additions and deletions this morning. C, presentations and recognitions.
No presentations is, no.
We don't have any today, okay. All right, so number, item D is the general consent agenda. Can I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pearl.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Sova. Any one want anything removed for questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item.
We do have a retirement resolution.
Yes, I apologize, yes. Go ahead.
Whereas Janine Morikone and Nadine Corniffel have served the Chippewa Valley School District faithfully and diligently for a period of 25 years as a teacher and 26 years as a social worker. Whereas Janine Morikone and Nadine Corniffel through their leadership have had a positive impact on the staff, students, and the community. Whereas Janine Morikone and Nadine Corniffel conscientious, loyal, hardworking employees have elected to retire. And whereas Janine Morikone and Nadine Corniffel will be missed by all their school colleagues. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Chippewa Valley School District, not only on their behalf, but also that of the Superintendent of Schools and the Administration, extend their thanks and appreciation for a job well done, as well as best wishes for the future. Be it further resolved that this resolution, having been adopted by the Board of Education of the Chippewa Valley School District on the 13th day of July 2022, be made a permanent part of the records of the school district and a copy sent to Janine Morikone and Nadine Corniffel as an expression of our appreciation.
Okay, thank you. We wish them all a very long and healthy retirement. All right, now, item, item E, old business, we haven't had this time. Item F, new business, approve hire of an administrator, Mr. Roberts.
Sure, this is for approval of a person, hire of an administrator, assistant principal at Dakota High School. Recommended, recommended motion that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education approve the hire of Dr. Renee Riband-Amther to the position of Dakota High School Assistant Principal. Dr. Riband-Amther's effective start date is still to be determined.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Support. Made a motion by Ms. Pyden, supported by Mr. Pearl, rationale, please?
Dr. Riband-Amther is being hired to fill a vacancy created by a resignation, and she meets all the qualifications listed on the posting.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations. Welcome back to your original home.
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
In 1997, during the July school board meeting, I was hired to teach English at Dakota High School. I was 22, and it was my first professional teaching job. Now, 25 years later, at the July board meeting, I would like to thank the current board members of the Chippewa Valley School Board for bringing me home by hiring me as an assistant principal at Dakota High School. Additionally, I would like to thank Superintendent Roberts for being a genuinely passionate educational leader. The respect I have for you makes me proud to have your support as a candidate. Thank you to Dr. Don Broski and Paul Sibley for helping me as a young administrator at the International Academy of Macomb and for continuing to assist in my growth. I'd like to acknowledge Kevin Koskis and express how excited I am to work on his leadership team. I know Kevin to be a brilliant person with a heart for education and a commitment for positive progress. I'd like to acknowledge and thank my family and friends who have come to support me, including my husband Scott and my youngest daughter Luna. My oldest daughter is at a musical theater camp today. And then my best friend Sarah Manier White, who would be here even if she didn't have to be. A special thanks to my daughters, who always support my ambitions and encourage me and are the reasons or my inspiration for every new challenge that I accept. In the Garden of Thoughts by Dudinsky, he writes, "I believe wherever dreams dwell, the heart calls it home. So may you untangle yourself from the twist of melancholy and let your thoughts carry you back to the birthplace of your truth. My truth as an educator was born at Dakota High School. Thank you to everyone who was instrumental in bringing me back to that truth." Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I'm sure your children support you, and you have been a great role model for them for setting goals and achieving what you set out to do. So congratulations and welcome back.
Thank you.
All right, next is item F2, Mr. Roberts, approve MHSAA.
Recommended motion that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education approve a Michigan High School Athletic Association membership resolution for the period of August 1st, 2022 through July 31st, 2023, and that the reading of the resolution be waived.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pearl, supported by Mr. Sova. Rationale, please.
It is required by the MHSAA that the Board of Education formally adopt the annual resolution in order to obtain membership in this organization for our two comprehensive high schools and four middle schools.
Okay, any questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F3, Mr. Sutterland, approve Fastbridge Assessment.
The recommended motions that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education approve the sole source provider illuminate education for a three-year contract totaling $100,00125 for 4,500 software subscriptions for the Fastbridge Assessment System.
Motion?
Moved.
Moved by Mr. Pearl.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Pyden, rationale, please.
The proposal was reviewed and approved by the Educational Services and Purchasing Departments. Funding will come from the 2022 to 2025 at-risk grant funds for this purchase.
Any questions, comments?
I do. For these programs, which was the NWEA and the Fastbridge, I guess, what are the state requirements that we have to meet on those? I was told that this program actually meets a state requirement?
Yes, it does. There are certain assessments that are approved by the state, NWA being one of them. Fastbridge is considered a local assessment, and we are allowed to use local assessments. What we are doing right now is we have instituted Fastbridge Assessments for grades K through three, and we are looking to continue on to grades four and five for next year. So K through five by twen, the 23-24 school year will be Fastbridge Assessments as opposed to NWEA.
Okay, so as, well, the NWA, EA, and now Fastbridge, what information do we report to the state or any other entity, I don't know, federal, state, or whatever?
The, the reporting has to do with, if you recall, at the June meeting, we, we talked about our growth report, which is an offshoot of the COVID-19 Extended Learning Plan. And so what we, we needed to do is provide our goals and then show our growth. Through the ISD, the decision was made because most, most districts in the Macomb Intermediate School District use NWEAs, that's what we were using as our reporting method. We will then continue to do that, but we will use Fastbridge instead. That needs to be posted for the public, we need to do a, a public presentation and all, so that is the requirement that we have right now. The requirement for assessment by the state is the M-Step Assessment. That is what is recognized as the state standardized test. But the M-Step is more or less a, an assessment that's taken once per year, whereas Fastbridge is a benchmark assessment, it's given up to three times per year, and it allows us to dig down and to get really granular about student skill deficiencies and where they would need additional assistance.
I guess the only concern I have, and with NWEA and this, seems there's cases nowadays where your collection of data has gotten to go crazy here, so I guess that's my only concern.
Understandable. We are, we're data-driven, and the way that we tailor our, our individualized education for students, the instruction that we have, we need to have that type of assessment. We use it. Builders use it, they're, they're working together as, in collaborative groups as far as the, at the building level, and this data is discussed frequently, up to 18 times per year if necessary. So we do utilize that, and one of the things is, we need to know where our students are and how we can best meet their needs.
See, and I understand that for us, but I mean, as far as like reporting to the state or federal or anybody else, I don't know what we do with this. How much data do we actually give out, I guess? Is there, I mean, a lot, or do?
No, we, we, we provide, we provide aggregate scores, so they are not individual scores
per student or per grade level. It's aggregate scores. So we're very concerned about providing local, local assessments, local scores, and I believe that superintendents across the county feel the same way. So we will, we will meet the requirements, but we utilize our own local assessments for us, and that's what, that's what it's for. The standardized assessments through M-Step, those are considered statewide, and those are available on MySchool data, they're available for anyone to take a look at. But what we need to do is, we need to do the day by day, and so reporting that out to the state is not, is not necessary.
Okay.
Right, we, don't we use that for MTSS so that we can do multiple tiers?
Yes, that's what it's used for.
Support, really, for individual students, I mean.
Well, see, I understand how the data can help us, but I just, I always wonder how much we have to report to other entities and things like that, so, okay, okay.
Can I ask one question? So when you say aggregate, is that at the grade level across the district?
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I was, I just wanted to make sure, so it's not.
So not individual.
Okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F4, approve school loan revolving fund, Mr. Sutterland.
The recommended motions that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education approve the preliminary school loan revolving fund application and resolution, and that the reading of the application and resolution be waived.
So moved.
Support. Moved by Mr. Pearl, supported by Ms. Pyden, rationale, please?
School board approval of the preliminary school loan revolving fund application resolution is necessary to allow the district to meet its principal and interest payments on outstanding bonds and levy a total of six, 8.64 mils for debt retirement. Without access to the school loan revolving fund, the district would need to levy additional millage for debt retirement.
Okay, questions? And or comments? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F5, approve second reading of amended board bylaw 016.3, public participation. At the Chippewa Valley Board of Education, approve a second reading to amend Board bylaw 016.3, public participation at board meetings as presented, and waive the reading of the bylaw. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Support.
Support, okay, Ms., Ms. Pyden, motion by Ms. Pyden, supported by Mr. Pearl. Rationale is that Board of Education bylaw 0167.3 has been amended to more closely align with best practices for operating an orderly and efficient meeting while providing individuals of the public an opportunity to address the board. Questions and comments on this?
Why do we feel a need to do this?
I, I, in my opinion, I think that it's mostly to make sure that we have a lot, we've had meetings that have become, sometimes, this is just legally aligned with what ALMA says, so that we have a clear cut what we are allowed to do and what the public is allowed to do, that's my opinion anyway, I don't. And then the other thing is, is that we are going back to limiting board, I mean, can we become two, three minutes from five minutes in terms of efficiently running our meetings and having them, you know, the commentary not last for hours and hours sometimes. If, but, in the past, when we did have three minutes, just, I just want to clarify something. We allowed people to come up and speak and give their time to someone else, not like we limited them from speaking if it was a subject that all of them were in common coming forward for. So I don't want people to think that we won't allow people to talk about a subject, that it will just be that we have three minutes instead of five, basically. Anyone else, or anything else? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right.
Actually, I should have said opposed, I'm sorry.
That's okay, no, I, it's right, it's fine. F6, purchase of textbooks, Mr. Sutterland.
The recommended motions that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education approve the vendors below for the purchase of $379,077.68 worth of textbooks for the Grants, Educational, and Special Services Departments.
Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Pearl, supported by Ms. Pyden. Rationale, please.
Aggressive pricing was obtained through the public bidding process, ITB 5.2223. The proposals were reviewed and approved by the Grants, Educational Services, Special Services, and Purchasing Departments. Funding will come from various sources in the general fund for this purchase.
Various sources, sources of the grants.
Grants, some grants, some, some general fund. We actually might even have some of them come from the Student Intervention Fund, too.
Oh, okay.
Yes, we.
All right, thank you. All right, any questions, comments?
Yeah, I have a question, couple of questions. I guess, besides. I guess, besides, I know that we've gone through a process to go through these. If, let's just say we didn't like something that was in these books, what other options do we have besides, because I know that textbooks nowadays seem to be standardized, standardized or whatever. Basically, they have certain books, and companies don't usually specialize specific to the district or whatever. Do we have any other options, if we didn't like these textbooks, to go to a different textbook, seeing that the choice is probably very small? Is that right, or?
There are choices for textbooks, and, you know, we kind of laid out what the process is. We have a process for choosing textbooks. If a textbook is not, in fact, the textbooks that we're purchasing this year for 7th grade social studies will be replacing textbooks that are either out of date or are not relevant to us. So, there is a process that can be done. We follow that pretty clearly, moving our way through our curricular leaders, our curriculum councils, our K-12 evaluation committee. So, it most definitely can be done. We have a specific textbook proposal that goes through K-12. We have two types of K-12 proposals. One is for course, one is for textbook. So, that's, anyone is able to bring forward that. A member of our teaching staff, instructional staff, if they find a textbook, they are able to do that. But there is a process. It's not, it's not a rubber stamp.
Okay, and I guess also, if somebody from the public, our parents or somebody, wanted to go through these, can they get access to look through these books?
Textbooks are available. Students bring textbooks home all the time, and if not, I'm sure that they could take a look at textbooks.
So, I guess basically, yes?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Hey, anything else? Okay, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And, I'm gonna quickly, we're just gonna take a couple-minute recess. Excuse Mr. Pearl, because he has to go, he has a business meeting that he's supposed to be attending right now. So, we can start with from the community. We'll just excuse him for a short few minutes. And I also failed to excuse Mr. Bednard and Ms. Dymickzak for today's meeting. They had conflicting work and/or personal schedules. Okay, so, the first speaker that I have on here is... Hold on a minute, please, I'm sorry. All right. The first person is Jessica St. Lawrence. Please come to the microphone.
Good morning. My comments today are twofold. One, I would like the board to please confirm whether or not a SAC director in fully-staffed childcare will be in place at Shawnee Elementary at the beginning of the 22, 23 school year. Shawnee finally had phenomenal childcare staff put into place during the middle of the 21, 22 school year, and families were repeatedly in limbo. The last director did a fantastic job. However, she resigned right before the school year ended. While an alternative did fill in, I just want to be assured that there is a solidified plan in place. Please remember that school-aged childcare is the backbone for working families. Please consider juggling schedules, recruiting, doing whatever you have to do to ensure that Shawnee's childcare is fully-staffed and ready to go beginning the first day of this upcoming school year. In the event that childcare is not available, it is another school's turn. My second concern is the new proposed public speaking policies that request parents to state their name and residence along with diminishing their time by almost half. If you truly want to engage community members and have a collaborative community partnership, as your website touts, this is not the way to go about making people feel valued and welcomed as you state. The timing of the policies is very interesting. Right after a FOIA request that the district backpedaled on that happened to involve the confirmed reporting to the Department of Justice, it is the same handful of community members who speak at meetings, and all viewpoints should be respected even if you disagree with those speaking out. That having been said, please strive for professionalism in the event that you publicly disagree amongst yourselves. All board members, in their opinion, should be valued and respected even if you disagree with them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next person is Mr. St. Lawrence.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, I'm Dan St. Lawrence. Forgive me for not being as eloquent as my wife today. My wife and I both spoke at board meetings multiple times, originally to bring a concern, and then we came back later to thank you for addressing the concern. Today, I want to talk about the new changes to the, from the community portion of meetings. I know that we're told that they are to align with the Open Meetings Act, but a couple of things, I'm not gonna go through all of it, a couple of things seem pretty odd to me. Reduce time. For the about a dozen meetings I've been here, I don't think that any of them have been excessively long. I know that we're being told it's to align with the Open Meetings Act, but it kind of makes some people wonder, are you trying to reduce parent involvement or reduce involvement from specific speakers? The other thing I have some issue with is why are addresses being requested to speak in front of the board? We provide our address, for people that don't know, we provide our address on a form that we sign before we get the opportunity to speak. If our addresses need to be verified, we can pull out our driver's license and show it to the district employee. I don't see the need or the practicality for us to publicly state our address if that is what I'm understanding is being asked for. I'm sure district legal team knows what they're doing, but you do run the risk of a parent providing their address, and they have a kid in the district, and now other kids in the district know where that kid lives, and that parent might not want to provide that. I'm a public school teacher in another district. I teach government. I talk to my students about the importance of participation, and I often talk about how the school board is the most closest government organization that affects their lives on a daily basis. My students know that I speak. I don't want my students knowing where I live. I don't want my students knowing where my kids live. I don't see the need for any member to say where their specific home address is. It's on the form that we fill out. It can be verified before we come here. So, I'm hoping maybe I'm being a little too cautious, but maybe there were some aspects that weren't considered. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Pearl?
Well, just, I just want to comment that, the way I understand the law works is that we can request it, but you don't have to give it.
Right.
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 You know, that's my experience in many meetings.
And it's always been in our policy. That is not a new addition to our policy. It's always been in there, yeah.
It has always been in there. Okay, thanks. Okay, next is Ms. Radico. Come to the.
It's Radico.
Radico, I'm sorry.
This morning, I've been going to address a few things. The first thing I'll be addressing is the way that I was treated at the last board meeting during my public comments. I have spoken at 11 board meetings and has never gone over my speeches before. At the board meeting on June 20th, my speech went over the five-minute mark. I informed the board member that I was almost done. Instead of allowing me to finish, I was rudely gavelled and then was told, nope, not letting you finish. In regard to that situation, I have this quote. Be thankful for all the rude, obnoxious, and difficult people you meet in life, too. They serve as important reminders of how not to be. I did also want to add that these new mics are amazing. They pick up everything. Ms. Aquino got caught in the hot mic and said, we're sinking faster than the Titanic. Oh, is this still on? We can finally agree on something. They even picked up your phone conversation while an employee was giving his report. I'm also glad that you had a good laugh when the assistant superintendent gave his time to miss another employee. This behavior does not show a district that respects and values parents. November 8th can't come soon enough. I was denied and lied to about information that I had requested in a FOIA. Still waiting on that apology, too. It took two months for me to get an answer to my request. At the board meeting on May 16th, my FOIA was pushed to the end of the meeting after the executive session. I had to wait for about two hours while you finished your executive session so you could discuss my FOIA. Yet, this board couldn't allow me 30 more seconds to finish my speech. On the district website, it states, "One of the best things about Chippewa Valley schools is its school community. Our district enjoys a high level of parent and community support. We believe that parent involvement is the key to a great education. If you are a parent who thinks differently from this board, then you are not valued. There's a very good chance that I could be sitting up there on that board. The way that I've been treated at board meetings, every glare and dirty look in Facebook comments will be remembered." Next, I just wanted to make a comment about a board member being questioned on his no vote for the STEM Plus program. You question this board member on why he voted no, but yet, when a board member voted no on a principal, not one member asked why she voted no. This principal is going to be the principal at my children's elementary. I've met this principal several times and have also emailed her. She seems like the perfect person for the job. She has emailed me back within minutes and has always been friendly and kind. I think she will do an excellent, excellent job at our school. It is concerning that a board member voted no, but was never questioned why. According to Ms. Aquino, when board members vote no on something, they talk about it. I guess only board members who think differently get asked when they vote no. Lastly, this board is spending time on changing the bylaws for public comments to again try to silence parents they don't agree with. There are so many more issues that this board should be focused on. It's concerning to me to find out that 5th grade classrooms had 35 kids in them. You are well aware that enrollment is down, and I don't believe it's part of a trend that Demographers reported years ago. It's because of guidelines and choices that this board has made. I did ask Ms. Aquino if she could get me the numbers for how many families pulled their kids to homeschool, transferred to private, or another district. I'm still waiting on those numbers. There are teachers that are currently displaced because enrollment is down. What is this board going to do to fix these issues? Because apparently, your concern is on parents that question you at board meetings. My focus will always be putting kids first, allowing parents to have a voice in education, and supporting teachers. ElectMonicaRadico.org.
Okay, next is Ms. Perrin. Would you like to come to the microphone?
Good morning.
Hi.
The overall reaching theme and problem is transparency. I have learned much over the past 11 months since I began attending the board meetings about transparency by watching, participating, and hearing what is said and what is not said. It is your actions and lack of transparency in many areas that you have led me to become involved. Some of my observations are as follows. One, when a concern is brought before you in public and you have a staff meet with the individuals, you do not share in public the solutions or the outcome in public. It remains quiet unless the individual brings it back to the board meeting. Two, you make policy changes that don't provide the public sufficient information regarding the policy. You know what it is, but the public has to search it out for themselves. I'm not sure why that happens when the issue brought in public should be really clear to the public. You could easily use the monitors that you have up here in the room, and that would help to clarify any misunderstandings or wrong misinterpretations. Three, you stated a few meetings ago, changes would be made to the community section, yet no one had any idea what those were going to be, unless you had that in front of you. The following board meeting, a community member had asked what it was, and you had an opportunity then to be transparent in your of and about section, but nobody chose to do that. As some of the changes are having been submitted, you have to do a form. This is an attempt to limit the number of speakers. Oh, you're too late if you don't get it in by a certain time, is what it said, and yet, community section uses it an hour later. Amount of time the person speaks, when multiple people are on a topic, one representative, it states should represent the group. And how is it that we should know what somebody walking in the door is going to speak about? And does that mean you get to determine who to stop and whether it's already been covered? You want us to restate the name and information when you've already called a SEPFY name. So, these changes do not appear to be the advantage of anybody other than yourselves. It isn't in any advantage for the community for who it is written. The changes we now discover are only one more attempt on your part to silence the community as part of the cancel culture. You don't state in the minutes the topic that the community shares, and you don't even put the name down, I noticed, in the last couple of meetings. We have kind of been wiped off and are eradicated. Transparency? I contacted a couple administrators and board members from other districts to learn how they address this. Not only do they state the person's name, but they put a brief description or statement of the topic that was addressed. Four, and last, I also learned from the other districts that they are putting policies in place to address staff hiding information from parents, such as pronoun usage or difficulties that are being addressed in schools. I brought before you before about being proactive. I really would like to encourage you to be proactive on different topics and not be secretive and have a transparency. And yet, I was told that you are not going to do that. You will react when a problem occurs, and that especially when happening, things are happening to our individuals, children. And let me state it again, it's their children. I encourage you to be an example of do as I do and say, not to be an example of do as I say, not as I do. That is what we keep experiencing. I learned over my 40 years of teaching, apologies when wrong, validating parents and community concerns goes a long way to solving problems and building trust in the community. Almost any concern over a problem can be worked out. Recently, only one board member demonstrated an example of this. When all were discovered, they made a serious accusation and denied it. I challenge you to be more transparent, to build trust in this community. And then I noticed recently that it's no longer going to be livestreamed, and I look at that and I go, why not livestream? I'm kind of baffled by that, because then the question becomes, oh, is that so now it could be edited? Things we don't want to have heard, or whatever? I mean, again, it has kind of like a secrecy piece to it. So I'm not sure why, since that's such an easy piece to do, why that would be put in place. So, thank you for your time. I really encourage you to build the trust here. People really want to work together. Thank you.
Okay, last, Mr. Miles.
Good morning. As you may know, I've been coming to board meetings for a while now. I've seen some good things happen, but in my opinion, it has been mostly bad policy after bad policy. And I am sure that opinion is shared by other parents and taxpayers in this district. With all the serious issues plaguing this school district, what does this board focus on? Talking to legal about how to rewrite bylaws in an attempt to silence parents who speak out at meetings questioning said bad policies. They have even gone as far as sending concerned parents' names to the DOJ, labeling them as domestic terrorists. Seriously? Come on. Because they're concerned with their child's education and call out those responsible for it, their character and moral compasses run through the mud. But yet, when we speak at a meeting, you make sure we don't address our elected officials, who by the way, have a duty and right to answer to us, as we are the ones that put you there. And we simply must address the board chairman, who has absolutely no intention of taking anything we say as a serious concern, even though we have kids in the district and they do not. I have read the proposed new bylaw for the, from the community, as it is posted on the website. Just out of curiosity, when board members speak during of and by the board, will they have to follow the same rules? Do you have to state your name and address in any organization you may be a part of? Like maybe if somebody's affiliated with the MEA? I'm sure people would love to hear about that. Oh, wait, you're exempt from these rules. I forgot. Livestreaming. I think I read it will be stopped, but still recorded and posted later on. Even though the technology is already in place, you're going to stop it? Is that so you have time to edit out everything that's not relevant, that you deem as not relevant? Once again, a total and blatant disregard for students, parents, and taxpayers of this community whose money, by the way, helps pay for things when we have millages, right? In closing, a big fat sarcastic thank you for doing what you can to try to silence a few instead of taking care of 15,000-plus students that count on you. Well done. Lastly, you all should be ashamed of yourself for the public degradation that went on at the meeting the other night. That is completely uncalled for, completely unprofessional, and by no means should ever be allowed to happen publicly. We can't even call individuals out for their decisions, but you can stand there and mock everything that we say publicly? Not cool. Not cool. You should all be ashamed of yourselves for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Union Communication. There's no one. Oh, yeah, come to the podium, I'm sorry. Could you state your name and your affiliation with Union, please?
My name is Kelly Gek. I am the chairman.
My name is Kelly Gack, I am the chapter chair for the Paraprofessional Monitors Unit.
Thank you.
Good morning. Today, on behalf of the Paraprofess and Monitors, I would like to acknowledge the school board for leading us through another challenging year. The work you do on behalf of this district is greatly respected and appreciated. Also, I would like to acknowledge, I would like to thank you for the acknowledgement the employees received from the board, it was greatly appreciated. Thank you for all that you do, we look forward to another wonderful year under your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, administrative reports, Mr. Roberts, do you have any?
The only thing I want to mention that, um, is I would like to just, um, congratulate, um, Dr. Renee Riban-Amther. She, um, first of all, she just received her doctorate degree, so that's quite an accomplishment. And as you can tell, as she addressed you this evening, or this morning, oh boy, this morning, um, she ended with a quote, you could tell she was a, a high school language arts teacher.
Yeah.
She's very successful, and she's had wonderful experience, and she left Dakota High School and went to, um, the International Academy as their assistant principal. So, it's great to have her back, I think she is, um, going to be a valuable addition to our district-wide administrative team due to her specific skills and talents. So, I just want to congratulate, um, Renee this evening on her, her new position. And that's it, administration reports, and I don't believe there are any curriculum reports this morning.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, of and by board members, Mr. Vitoric, do you have anything you want him to say today, uh, this evening?
I always have a lot of stuff, but would you like me to say something?
Well, yeah, of course.
No, I can hold back today.
You don't have to hold back, whatever you want. Mr. Solva, do you have any comments this evening, just morning?
That?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Pearl?
Just a couple things, um, I'm not opposed to being live, I think the decision to, to not film, show it live was to try to get more participation from people to come out, but if the board wants to change that, that's fine. And I'm, I'm hundred percent sure that nothing's edited. Correct, Sarah? It's shown just, you know, the way it was produced. The only other question I have is, Mr. Roberts, um, is our, is our packet available for the public before the meeting, um, on the website?
Yeah, there is, there is a packet that is made available to the public. So, the pile, the bylaws were included in the last packet that went out.
And how about the backup materials?
Not, no, I'm not sure, Kim Pusso's, not all, those allow to go in the confidential packet.
Is it all right with the board, can they, can everything but confidential be put on our website? That's what I'm used to.
Yes, she does, unless it's confidential.
Okay, so you do put, so the books would be on there and everything?
The what, I'm sorry?
The backup for the books?
Oh, that's all on there.
It's all on there, before the meeting?
It's in your packet now, everything that was put on...
Is on the public website?
Is on the website, yeah.
Okay, okay, so, there is some transparency, we are showing all of that.
Yeah.
Okay, and, okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
I guess...
How's it listed? One more question. It's listed as agenda, the whole packet's on there. Okay. So, if you go into Board of Education, and you go up, our district, Board of Education, agendas and minutes, it's under agendas, and it's listed, the same day I sent it to them, it's posted on the website. So, and everything, the whole packet's out there.
Thank you.
I do have, just two quick comments. Uh, first of all, when I said the textbook, I guess what I was looking at, not just the name, if somebody wanted to come and actually, you know, get a copy or look through a copy, that's what I was referring to, instead of having to go buy the book to look through it.
Oh, no.
So, I mean, if they could just do that. And also, just another quick comment, um, as far as the bylaw change, one of the things that did concern me is I, too, have never been a fan of giving your name and address, or your address, when addressing a public situation, so, okay.
Okay, um, first of all, I'd like to congratulate, um, Renee for her new position, and that is especially, you know, exciting for her and for us. And I'd like to say, um, I, I feel that, you know, back in, when we had this bylaw originally, we did ask people to state their name and address, but if I think about it, it's because we did not have livestream, you know, we didn't have recordings. So, back then, we, that was our only way of really knowing who they were, but it was also, I, I think it was on there, it may not have been on, we didn't, might, I don't think we had a form at that time, okay? So, we had no, a way, that was many, many years ago. So, that did stay in there, but yeah, I, I agree, we don't have to have people state it, uh, it says that, but I, I agree that there's no reason, since it's gonna be recorded and sent out to, you know, community, so, um, and I understand people's concern, and I apologize if they feel like they've been treated unfairly, um, but I also think that mutual respect is something that I appreciate, and so, in, from my part, if there's things that I, in my life, feel that I have, um, not done properly, I always look at myself and reflect and try to make changes, and I will do that. And I would expect the same from all the people that are also in the audience, and I appreciate that, too. But mostly, I would say, I think our district has on a very positive trend and has been for a very long time. I understand the concerns of parents individually, and even though I don't have any, um, children who are in the district, I do have grandchildren i- in the district that, and I'm very involved at their school, and I drop them off every day and pick them up and go to their latchkey and everything. So, even though I'm not their direct parent, I am involved and understand what's going on in different schools, so, I just wanted to let you know that, and with that, I would like to have a motion for adjournment. So moved. Moved by Ms. Piden, anyone else?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Vitoric. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We are adjourned at nine fifty-eight. Thank you for coming. We did it, at nine fifty-eight, since you were here, we just wanted to have it started so we could keep going.